Regular meeting called to order. Councilmember Clayton?
Here.
Councilmember Kendall?
Here.
Councilmember Warner?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here.
There will now be a statement by mayor and council.
This is a follow-up of Monday night, anybody wasn't here. It's going to be the same statement made as far as the tragedy that happened in Asbury Park and the tragic events in South Carolina, and Councilwoman Clayton's going to read it.
It is with profound sadness that we, the mayor and city council, offer our heartfelt condolences to the children and extended family of Tamara Seidel. Tamara was an excellent mother, a friend to be trusted and relied on, a faithful employee, and devoted member of the Mount Carmel Catholic Church. She was loved and will be missed. In response to the unthinkable tragedy in South Carolina, we send healing energy and comfort to the surviving relatives and members of the Emmanuel AME Church. This horrific act has demonstrated that hate cannot defeat love, and brotherhood can triumph over racism. As a society, we must reexamine both our gun control laws, as well as our ability to identify and effectively treat individuals exhibiting poor mental health. Most importantly, we must stand together today and every day. We must remember that what unites us is greater than what separates us. The work of healing, the responsibility to prevent, and the necessity for change falls on us all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please stand for silent prayer, a moment of reflection. We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As to compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, and the Star Ledger on January 2, 2015, and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. May I have a motion to open the public comment portion of the meeting with a three-minute time limit for each speaker?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
The public is expected to conduct themselves in a proper manner, and derogatory, abusive, or threatening statements will not be permitted. The chair will immediately rule such conduct out of order, and after appropriate warning may terminate any further comments from that speaker.
Maureen Nevin, Dill Lake Court. I just want to say I appreciate John and Mr. Nuccio following up on my request to check out that lot on the corner of Webb and Dill Lake Drive, the eyesores, that trailer, there's several trailers on that property. I learned tonight that they're going to consolidate all of that into the Eighth Avenue lot that has, used to be the motel there, and has quite a bit of stuff, sorry about that. The pollen is still getting to me. You know, it seems like every lot along, you know, our most valuable property is part of this ongoing process. But, you know, I'm glad that they recognize the need to cover it up, and as Tony was telling me, it's going to be a shed-like arrangement created to blend in better with the surroundings. So I hope that they do it quickly, and I hope that maybe we can talk next about the Esperanza, because it's got to be affecting our values, you know, and that's our tax revenue. So, but thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mayor, council staff, Werner Baumgartner, Fifth Avenue. I also noticed the new condos being built on Lake Avenue. You really can't help but notice it, and it's just a prime example of what is really inappropriate planning for an existing community. The fact that it's allowed to be built out to the property line should raise alarm bells for the downtown redevelopment plan, and the redevelopment plan really should be reexamined as to the density and the footprints of buildings that are permitted down there. They should conform to pre-existing neighborhood character, not stick out like sore thumbs and overwhelm the classic neighborhood that's there. Downtown was declared a historic district, and that certainly does not fit in to that context. So I have to say that the comments by Deputy Mayor Quinn are so much appreciated by myself as city historian to hear that a city planner has been hired with a background in historic preservation. I could not be more thrilled. I have fought this battle for as long as I've lived here, 35 years, to raise an awareness and a sensitivity to the need to preserve the character and heritage and culture of this town, this city. So I think, you know, my first mission will be to introduce myself to the new planner, get to know the new planner, and spill all my knowledge into her lap so that she could be effective. I think the most critical thing at this point, which I've pointed out several times, is taking back public property. The city has for decades reneged on its responsibility and its obligation to protect public assets, and that is the landscape of the city that creates a look and feel that makes everyone in awe of how beautiful this town is. Getting rid of illegal fences, getting rid of encroachments on public property should be an extremely high priority, and having new infill construction conform to pre-existing neighborhoods should be a very high priority. So those would be my prime recommendations moving forward. Thank you.
Warner, I've already warned her about you.
She doesn't start until July 16th, so...
Good evening, mayor and council. Louise Murray, 1604 Grand Avenue. Where do I start? It won't take long. As far as your negotiations, if there are any negotiations pertaining to the triangle and your Bradley Cove, I strongly, strongly suggest that you either get no reflection on the attorneys that you may have, but being in that type of business, I strongly suggest you get an attorney that knows land law, New Jersey claims lines, that's over there in Trenton, and also your riparian rights, because, you know, everybody seems to forget good old Bradley. If it wasn't for Bradley, you know, I don't know where we would be sitting right now, which again makes me talking about your fiasco over there on Wesley Lake. I mean, if that's sitting on any of Bradley's land, guess what? I hate to have any of those airs pop up and say, "I want it," and then what are you going to do? But getting back to the Cove, which is very, very important and critical, I have a name of an attorney, that's all he does, and, you know, I'm sure the city would not hesitate to pay for those kind of fees, to get somebody that knows what they're doing, because nobody's reading deeds, nobody's looking at anything like that, and that is critical. Okay? Thank you.
So I agree 100%, and we're in the process, and before Don left, he helped us compile as many documents as he could regarding planning and the amendments to the plan. So we have made contact with two appraisers, and they are going to be coming to a meeting probably in August with the state, where we'll have, the Tyblons' claims are on the list, the Green Acres diversion is on the list, the riparian rights, the high-hazard flood zone coming from the ocean is on the list, taking a look at, you know, the existing zoning. All of those pieces are on the list for the two appraisers. They'll then go out and do their legal research, and they come up with two independent values based on those numbers. And the idea is that, as it stands now, it can't be built because of the Green Acres diversion process. So the question is, how much do all those pieces shave off of the value?
Quickly, you need a land lawyer, and I'm telling you, that too should have to sit in on the negotiations, not only the appraisers, because they only cost you money. I mean, you need somebody that knows what this offer and ask to do.
Okay, yeah, we'll look into that as well.
After the meeting, you say you have a name of the lawyer. Give it to Tony, please.
What's wrong with that?
Give it to Mr. Nuccio at the end of the meeting, please.
Okay, Rita Moreno, Eighth Avenue. I had the opportunity to read the MOU. It was quite glaring and startling, what was in it. It happens to go back to November of 2014, so I guess it's in effect now, in 2015, right? So anyway, on page four of the MOU, I recommend that you all read it. I don't know if you all read the MOU, but that, I don't want to go into details with that. It's kind of embarrassing. And on page five, about comp time, it says, on page five, it says that comp time has to be used within 30 days. So I don't know what's going to happen to the 15,000 hours, but this happened to come out in November, and I'll give them to January, to use that time. So I think that's null and void, that comp time, because that's the way it's written. It said if you don't use it in 30 days, it's gone. That's the other thing. And then on page nine, I think you should read that page, too. It says if you're not in compliance with the MOU, they're going to take the money away. So I think that's a very, I think you should all read that page, because it's very important. There's a lot of pages in there you don't have to read, but those four pages that I get, three pages, I gave you, are very, very, very important. So what are we going to do about comp time? I didn't get the union contracts, because she didn't, I put all union contracts in my request, but I did not get them, because they didn't know which ones I wanted. So I just figured you'd just want them to delay that one. But I put in another request tonight. So I didn't get the new union contracts. So what's happening with comp time? Because if you don't abide by this, you don't get the money. And according to the MOU, it was like $2 million. I don't know if that was last year, so if that's what we're getting this year. That wasn't clear, but I think it was last year's. So what's going to happen with comp time on page five?
The first response is, is that that's last year's amount. We don't know what our transitional aid will be this year. All right? Regarding the comp time, I'm going to give you the same response that I have been giving you, is that I've talked to each one of the department heads. All right, we're going to reduce the comp time hours back to, all right, compliance with the collective bargaining agreements. All right, in regards to the issues around the payout of comp time in the past, all right, we recognize what's in the MOU. The waiver had been submitted, all right, the waiver had been signed off by the state for that. All right, and again, all right, based on, all right, the Fair Labor Standards Act.
What's the waiver about?
All right, for any payouts, hiring of individuals, spending of any money, all right, the city has to submit waivers to the state, all right, and they approve whatever we spend.
Well, did they approve page five?
What's that?
Did they approve page five?
Yes, they did.
Well, it doesn't say it in the MOU. Wouldn't it say it?
No. The MOU was the original agreement between the city, all right, and the state, all right, regarding the transitional aid. Once we found that there was a problem with the comp time, all right, we had to submit waivers after the fact. All right, we are continuously submitting waivers that have to be signed off by the city manager, by the mayor, and by the chief financial officer, and they have to be approved by, all right, our fiscal monitor, all right, and they have to be approved by the director of local government finances.
And that has been approved?
That was approved.
That's hard to believe.
And it was based on the Fair Labor Standards Act, because they recognize that the MOU could not supersede, all right, a federal law.
So you have that in writing?
We have the waivers that were approved, yes.
I'd like a copy of those.
All right, we have communication back and forth.
All right, do I have to request that, or were you giving me those? The waivers?
You can request those.
Because, you know what? It's hard to believe in, buddy, because so many things go on. So it's, I'd like to see it in writing.
You could submit an open request to the clerk's office.
Okay, that's it.
Lori Ross.
Just a minute. Rita.
Yeah.
You write as far as the language in the 2014, as far as the comp time, but the problem and some of the reasons why the waivers went through, that language was not in 2012 and 2013. So we could not, we could not, and the state could not go back retroactively and punish people for something that was not there in past MOUs. That was added in 2014, but not previous years. Okay, Lori?
Yes, Lori Ross, 374 Long Branch Avenue, Long Branch, New Jersey. I'm speaking as a former city employee and in, to further Ms. Moreno's comments with regards to the comp time. I know that the city gets waivers, the state signs it, but all the taxpayers in the state of New Jersey are liable for that, in that you're still getting transitional aid, number one. Number two, upon my review of the outstanding comp time, people's old comp time is more than I ever made as a city employee. You have a high unemployment rate in this town, and you have a number of Asbury Park residents without jobs. And the reality is, instead of giving back to the union, and I'm speaking as a former member of the White Collar Union, instead of giving back all these grandiose benefits, the Cadillac benefits, you have to look at the citizens in this town. You have a lot of residents that are very, very well-qualified, even more than some of your department heads. And the reality is that these folks are either unemployed or underemployed, and the policy of the council should not be to continue to get waivers to give people exorbitant comp time, look at hiring more city residents. So again, yes, Mr. Nuccio, the state signs off on waivers, I think that is fiscally irresponsible. However, the reality is, this governing body has a say in these compensation packages. I looked at the list for the employment health benefits. People are getting paid money every month for not having benefits anymore, because that's their give-back. I mean, at what point does the city council say, "You know what? We have to stop this bloodletting. We have to stop this bleeding, and let's put forth an approach that employs more residents as opposed to giving folks comp time."
Thank you.
It's a million bucks, by the way, if it was $100 an hour.
Wow. I guess Felicia Simmons, 307th Avenue, Asbury Park. I'm coming here as a community person. I'm impressed at the moment of some of the things that I've heard. I'm impressed with some of the actions that I've heard, but there is a long way to go as a city person who lives here. I'm impressed, and I'm willing, and I know most of this room is willing to move the city forward, but I think that as a council and as a community as a whole, we stand at a very important part in time, and in this country and in this world, that we can move our town and our country further into the future. We have to, again, like she was saying and others are saying, let go some of the arrangements and the things of the past, and move forward to something creative and new that can benefit the whole city. I know we're moving that way. I'm hoping the whole council wants to continue to move that way, to employ the city, to build up the city. I was speaking earlier where I said I was looking at reports where the poverty level was coming up in Asbury, but not really. There's more rich coming in, but the impoverished are, least, less and less. And we have to do something as a whole community to stop that. We have to do something as a whole community to push us forward so we can go into the 2000s and 20s and 30s and 40s and give something back to our children and the legacy that comes behind us. We have to continue to make a legacy. We can't continue to live in the past of Asbury Park and the United States and the planet Earth. We have to push forward to something impressive and new. So I'm hoping as a whole council and as a whole community in this room, we push forward to something better and new. That's it.
Felicia, I thank you, and I just want to thank you. This morning, yesterday Ms. Simmons asked for a meeting, and we had a meeting this morning, which is quick, within 24 hours, where myself, Councilman Kendall, and the city manager and yourself, and we talked about the same problems. I think that shows this council is well aware of what you're saying, and you being on the Board of Education represent the board the same way, and we even had the side conversation. Sometimes you're the last ones to learn as a board of education, sometimes we're the last ones to learn, so we have to keep each other in the loop. I get phone calls from many people, very active in the community. I may not return them within 10 minutes, but I always return them within 24 hours. I do have a listed phone number. I think this council is very proactive of what you're saying, and we want to work together with everybody, and anybody who ever wants to meet anytime again, the doors are open, and just please reach out, because we're not mind readers, and we know we have problems, and the only way we can fix those problems is by what you just exactly said. We all have to work together for the betterment of the entire city, and I appreciate you reaching out to us today and solving a problem went back a month or so ago where you didn't get the answers you were looking for, but I think you got it today. So again, I thank you for reaching out to us.
Okay, good evening. Dan Harris, 17 Ridge Avenue, Asbury Park, New Jersey. First, I'd like to thank the councilmen and members of the council with working with our church, Second Baptist Church, on some of the plans that the city has for the West Side, and taking the time out to sit down and meet with us to discuss these plans, and that shows a great deal of respect. So we thank you for that. But in reference to historical things happening in Asbury Park, our church, Second Baptist Church, at 124 Atkins Avenue, is celebrating our 130th year of existence in this city. And as we plan things for our celebration of 130 years, we would like to keep the city actively involved in what we're doing and opening our doors to you to come in and take part in this celebration. Part of that celebration will be this Sunday, on our 55th Annual Men's Day, which you are invited to come at 10 o'clock. We also, starting on Monday, will be holding a vacation Bible school for youth in the city for one week to come in, and, you know, a lot of times they say we don't have anything for kids to do, well, we'll be offering a program, starting in the afternoon, approximately 5:30, I believe, where young people could come and get off the street, get a meal, sit down, and have some, play some games, have some fun while still being in still with some good spirit. Also, what I would like to say is, I was in, talking with Doug Eagle over at the Boys' Club today, and he asked me to please let you know that part of his summer schedule will entail three nights of league basketball for youth, teenagers off the street, and he said, "Dan, please tell them that this is going to be free of charge to our youth here in Asbury Park," and they're also pushing for girls' basketball inside the Boys' Club, trying to start a girls' basketball league this summer for our young ladies in the city. So just please take note of that. Yes, I'm trying to steal free time on AP-TV so people can look on cable and see it, okay? But a lot of times they say we don't have any way, anywhere to send our young people, and basically that sometimes is a communication problem. So I'm just trying to seize the moment and let people know what's out there and what's being offered for our children. Thanks for the time. Peace.
We thank you, and we commend you and all the hard work you do for your church and the church itself, 130 years, and again, his event is Sunday at 10 a.m.
Yep, and we're going to feed you when it's over. Thank you.
Danny, you spoke of the basketball for girls and boys, starting when?
Doug said, as soon, contact Doug. Actually, it's going to be starting in July, but he said he wanted to have boys and girls participating in his basketball program over at the Boys' Club.
He said what ages?
Teenagers, high school kids and middle school. But what makes it cool is the fact that a lot of times when we play basketball outside, the weather dictates what we can do, the heat, the humidity, and the rain. So by having it inside at the Boys' Club, it makes no difference. It can rain all it wants, and you still have someplace to go and be off the streets.
Thank you.
Hello, mayor and council, Jerry Scram, Long Branch. What I'd like to ask is, maybe you could put up on the website the importance of snow removal, whether it's the sidewalk, the bus stop, because when the sidewalks are clean, the stores benefit, and so does the public, so we should know about that. And then on the video that they could have on the website, they could show Red or Greenway at the poster park when a snowstorm's coming to the city. It's a visual thing that I think they should do, but maybe someone could do that on the website, so people know about snow removal, so they get used to the idea, because last year we had about 20 storms, and the sidewalks were havoc, only because some people just didn't follow the rules, made it worse for other people. So if you could start that now, or get it designed, maybe it'll be ready by September.
What we did, just FYI, Jerry, what we did last year on the website is, we didn't do maps, because we didn't know if people would get that, but we advised people to park on the even or odd side of the street and put that on the website. Initially, did east and west, and that confused people, myself included. So we did odd and even.
That's a good idea.
And that, that's how we took care of the snow issue last year. So my guess is that that's probably, that seemed to work well, and that's something that we'll probably do again this year.
Okay, I just figured people need a council reminder. The other thing is, I want to know, could you update us on the city manager's search, only because we really do need a city manager, full-time? Okay, so can you, when I'm done, could you update me on that? Then the other thing is, I remember on Main Street, when RDR built the building by Pizza Plus, they had a beautiful rending showing a beautiful building. Then we got stuck with a building that had bay windows, real small windows, and they said, "That's what the schedule said, was those windows," but the drawing showed big windows. I'm sure they were given a drawing for the 500 Lake Avenue building, and I'm sure nobody realized that it would stick out like another building on the sidewalk. The building is too big for that block. We have a thing called cityscape, city rural. Someone needs to go back and find out what hardship they were having, that they had to exceed the front line of the building to build out to the front of the street. I mean, there's something wrong, that it should have never happened, and maybe you need to re-educate the people on the board or replace them, because that's a sin, what happened. And my idea is, from now on, anybody who builds a multimillion-dollar project should have a digital drawing, because you can draw a house now, at home, on your home computer, what it's going to look like. They should have a video for, that you can put on the city website, because I'm sure the residents would have caught the mistake if the planning board didn't catch it. We need something that's more visual than just a nice drawing. I used to, when they were building the new building, they should have a model for each one, the way they had for OSHA Mile. All the buildings should have, when they're doing a project for a whole block, there should be a model so people can see it. And, I mean, could you guys give me some feedback on that idea, too?
Well, I can take the city manager's.
Okay, Tony, you can do the city manager.
All right, Jerry, the council has contracted with New Jersey Professional Managers, all right? This is a consultant company to go out to do the professional search for a manager, all right?
A city manager.
The city manager. The council has met with them. There is an ad on the League of Municipalities Now recruiting a city manager, all right, and they are in the process of collecting resumes, all right, with the guidance of, all right, the consulting agency.
And we met with, just different from last time, is we went through, we did an ad, and we went through the applications ourselves and narrowed them down. The difference this time was, one, we hired a company, and two, we met with the company. We told them what our priorities are, what the priorities of the city are, what we believe the priorities of the community are, and made sure that that would be communicated to any of the applicants applying for that job. So the idea is that they'll go through whoever applies, I don't know what the deadline is, they'll narrow it down to, I'm going to use a number, between 30 and 50. We'll do what we've done in the past, which is create a personnel committee, which means two council members, Tony Nuccio, so on and so forth. They'll get the 50 number of applicants, preferably down to maybe 20, and then with advice and guidance from the rest of the council, and then we'll start the interview process with the personnel committee, narrow it down, and then bring the people in front of the entire council. So I know there's a lot of questions about the vacancy, and anyone who wasn't here when we announced, we actually just announced a new city planner. And one of the things that we've been doing, which is different certainly than when I was on council previously, was we've adopted a personnel committee, which means we have two council members and city officials and professionals interviewing, reviewing applicants, talking about applications, talking about what our priorities are, talking about what the city's priorities are, which is why we came up with a city planner who has a, who won an award in historic preservation, because most people in this city want to see historic preservation. When... When, and we met, we went through the applicants, historic preservation was a qualification that we wanted to see, and the city manager will be the same thing. So I know people are perturbed by the process, and we could just hire to fill seats, I mean, we could just do that.
No, you're doing a good job.
But, or we could do it how we're doing, which is creating committees, prioritizing our priorities with the community's priorities, interviewing people, and advertising in a wide, innovative way for these job openings. So I think, as I've said before, we're working on it, it just isn't a quick process.
Okay.
To hire who we think are going to be best for these positions.
Okay, now, what about the idea for future design of building, digital drawing that could go on the website so the public could see it? A model would work, too, on a big project.
Yeah, I don't think anybody has a problem with requesting it.
But we have to do it now, though. You have to make sure.
I mean, the only thing I would ask, would, would, the only thing that I think we would want to know, if it's, there's like an undue burden, do I personally have any issue with it? I think it'd be great.
The burden is now the city's stuck with a building that's dangerous for pedestrians walking on sidewalk, with cars crossing the street. Even in New York City, they don't have garage doors open to the sidewalk. They're set back a whole car length, because when you pull in any parking lot in New York City, you have a whole car length to ease out onto the parking lot. Now the door will go open, and how are you going to see through the brick wall who's walking up and down the street, or someone with a stroller or a bike? I mean, we need to know what kind of hardship they cried to get that variance, so it never happens again.
Yeah, I, I don't know, not on the planning board, but Tony, maybe you could reach out when developers submit plans and talk to them about doing something virtual.
I mean, they maybe have to have, put TV cameras each side for the cars coming out and the people on the sidewalk, so they could see what's going on. That'd be a good way to straighten out the problem.
Something we could also put on the new planner's plate to, to come up with a process so that we get a visual when they're from the planning board.
But thank you for listening to me, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. I'm Minister Derek Grant, 1300 Summerfield Avenue. Here, pretty much, to speak about three specific issues. And I know Sister Felicia had spoke about moving the city forward. Deputy Mayor just spoke about, you know, what's best for the city. And I would admonish the city, I know you have, you know, tons of positions that you need to fill, we have people, you know, in temporary positions, but when you think about diversity, you think about the issues on the east side as well as the west side, in terms of our acting chief of police, I would admonish the city to open that position and really try to seek someone of African-American descent or a minority that would represent the police department and pretty much bridge the gap within our city. I believe that that's really important for diversity. And in looking at the issues that are going around all across this country, I believe we need diversity, more diversity within our police district, and I believe opening that position would, would really fulfill that. Two, on Summerfield Avenue, there are cars that travel almost 50 to 60 miles an hour. And I came to a previous meeting, and I know that there were some issues with speed bumps or things of that nature. I would highly admonish the city to try to look into that issue of speed bumps, especially on Summerfield Avenue, or at least have more patrols that hold people accountable. You know, you have children on Summerfield Avenue. There are other areas within the city that need more patrols and more speed bumps, too. Plethora of issues on both sides of the city, and we hate to use the word east side, west side, but that's just the reality we're living in. I feel that there are many resources that are not being used to the fullest extent. We have the school board, 80% illiteracy rate. Our church is sponsoring a literacy program, a reading program, to help children, you know, get to better levels. We have the West Side Community Center. And we need to really, accountability is the key. You know, city council, you're accountable to the residents of the city of Asbury Park. We're accountable as parents, we're accountable as residents, preachers are accountable, and I pray that so-called leaders within the city, leaders within east side and west side, begin to get on the right side of issues and work to better the entire city. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Lou Perici, Veterans Alliance, Asbury Park. I hadn't, I didn't come here to, didn't plan to say anything, but after listening to Mayor Moore and Councilwoman Clayton, I would like to share these thoughts with you. In a few weeks, we're going to be celebrating Independence Day. 239 years ago, our founding fathers in Philadelphia risked their lives to found a new nation conceived with a revolutionary idea that all men are created equal. They are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, among which are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. On the 14th of this month, we celebrated Flag Day, and that flag was meant to symbolize for us those rights that were promised 239 years ago. Now, you and I know very well that the ideal that was passed down to us has never been fully realized, and we say that with shame and regret. However, I am convinced that most Americans still adhere to that ideal that was pledged for us and for us to follow. We began the meeting this evening with the Pledge of Allegiance, in which we say that we are one nation under God with liberty and justice for all. If we look at the media, we are inclined to believe that this country is filled with racism. But I come to this meeting regularly, I know many of the people throughout the town, and I know my own personal experience, and as a veteran, and as a veteran, I can't help but recall that the past 75 years, we have been involved in seven major wars. World War II, Korea, Vietnam, the Two Gulf Wars, and Afghanistan. And now, all of us, in and out of uniform, are involved in the wars with terrorism. But I believe that what we can do in Asbury Park is, we are in a unique position. We're a small town, but we represent in a microcosm America at large. And while we can't fight the evils that we see daily and are, we are reminded of every night on television, we can, in our own lives, put into practice those ideals that we pledge, liberty and justice for all, and let our actions, not only in Asbury Park, but wherever we go, give evidence to our conviction of those ideals for which all of us are indebted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn, public session?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are on to item F, the acceptance of minutes. Would you like me to group them all together or read them individually? Group them all together. We have the January 14th regular meeting minutes, the April 22nd regular meeting minutes, the May 11th 2015 workshop meeting, the May 13th executive meeting, and the May 13th regular meeting.
Move it.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Go on.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We are on to item G, the consent agenda resolutions. All matters listed on the consent agenda are presented collectively to the city council and will be considered for approval with one vote. These matters are considered to be routine in nature, and there will be no individual discussion on these items. If discussion is desired by one or more council members as to any particular item, then said item shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. We have 2015-240, approving special events, wedding applications as presented on June 22nd, 2015. 2015-241, approving raffle license for Central and South Jersey affiliate of Susan G. Komen for the Cure for July 17th, 2015. 2015-242, approving a 50-50 raffle license for Central and South Jersey affiliate of the Susan G. Komen for the Cure for July 17th, 2015. 2015-243, declaring an emergency so that the provisions of Ordinance Number 2015-32, allowing the city to implement and enforce a stop sign at the intersection of Sunset Avenue and Memorial Drive, may take effect immediately.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Mayor Moore? Yes.
On to item H, individual resolutions. We have Resolution Number 2015-244, a resolution authorizing the payment of payroll in the amount of $934,267.55.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
On to Resolution 2015-245, a resolution authorizing the payment of bills in the amount
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes, with the exception of 5-01-23-220-000-209, which I abstained.
We're on to Resolution 2015-246, a resolution amending temporary appropriations for 2015.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
And to Resolution 2015-247, authorizing the disposal of surplus property.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015-248, authorizing the city clerk to execute all bingo and raffle games of chance applications to meet all provisions pursuant to the statute for the remaining of the 2015 calendar year.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015-249, authorizing approval to submit a grant application and execute a grant contract with the New Jersey Department of Transportation for the year 2015, Sunset Avenue.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015-250, a resolution authorizing the city engineer to advertise, receive bids, and perform construction administration for the boardwalk lighting project.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015-252, a resolution establishing additional fees relating to special events within the city.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Question. Just so everybody knows, I'm sure you probably saw, from what was introduced on, or recommended on Monday, two things have been changed. We found out where police and fire recovered lifeguards, so they've been added at the same rate. And then the last one, it came to my attention, says use of trash tipping fees, $130 per ton. And I thought that was excessive, and we're paying about $75 a ton, but this is the rate of a 20-yard container. So if it was taken out of that garbage truck, it would be at the going rate, but this is just the rate of it. What the list that charges us right now for a 20-yard container, so that wasn't specified. So they're the only two little minor changes.
One other change was the number of days prior to the event during which fees have to be paid. Originally, in the proposal that Mr. Gilmore made to you the other evening, the figure of 30 days was written in there. And since then, we reviewed the pertinent sections of the city code dealing with the special events, and there is actually a section in there that specifies 10 days. So this was changed, the schedule was changed to match what's in the code, so it's 10 days prior to the event. The other evening, I think there was some discussion about possibly making it 15 instead of 30. We actually made it 10, so it's consistent with what's in the code already.
Thank you.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2015-253, a resolution stating reasons related to the adoption of Ordinance Number 2015-31.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
On to Resolution 2015-254, a resolution authorizing the city of Asbury Park to implement the competitive contracting process to procure vendors to provide the following services to the city. Turnkey parking operations related to all regulated parking within the city, including but not limited to management, maintenance, enforcement, revenue, control, revenue enhancement, technology, innovation, customer service, and consulting.
So I'm just, can I give a 10 seconds?
Move it.
Move it.
Second.
This was an add-on from Monday, came from the Parking Committee's recommendation to go out and RFP for outsourcing aspects of our parking. There's a number of elements of our, of the parking in Asbury Park using, for example, enforcement, maintenance of the machines, permits, so on and so forth. Right now, all that's, all that's being handled in-house. What we are doing is looking at possibly outsourcing parts of that. So I will give you an example. We spend an obscene amount of money on the maintenance of these machines. So if we outsource part of that, we are hoping to save the city some money on that. Nothing, whatever we RFP, they just, whatever we RFP, if we hire a company, let's say, we say, hey, company, we want you to take care of our maintenance and save us money on maintenance, we want you to take care of our enforcement, and we want you to take care of our permits. All they do is make recommendations to the council, and the council ultimately decides whether or not they're going to move forward, and probably the Parking Committee. So this is just a RFP for certain services regarding parking, to break it up how other towns do, and to hopefully manage the entire parking issues in a more manageable and consistent way. So this, we brought up Friday, directed for it to do a resolution, which is why it's on this agenda, and it was not on your Friday agenda. Well, doesn't it go up on the website? The agenda that was published earlier, or later last week.
Roll call.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to item I, ordinances. This is a first reading, an introduction of Ordinance 2015-28, amending and supplementing Chapter 7, traffic of the revised general ordinances of the city of Asbury Park, New Jersey.
This relates to the no parking zone on the 1200 block of Monroe as set forth by the deputy chief at Monday night's council meeting.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We have a public hearing date for July 22nd, 2015. We're on to item two, second reading, public hearing. Have a motion to enter into a public hearing for Ordinance 2015-26, an ordinance amending Section 7-36 entitled handicap parking of, Chapter 7 entitled traffic of the revised general ordinances of the city of Asbury Park.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
And this authorizes the city to remove certain handicap parking spaces that were deemed no longer necessary by the Police Department.
Motion.
Close public hearing. Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Motion to adopt Ordinance 2015-26.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Motion to enter into a public hearing on Ordinance 2015-27, establishing a restricted parking space for use by handicapped persons at property located at 1701 Ocean Avenue, designated as Block 4303, Lot 1, in the City of Asbury Park, and amending and supplementing Section 7-36 entitled Handicap Parking of, of Chapter 7, Traffic of the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Asbury Park.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Is it open?
Yep.
Okay.
1701, it's Asbury Towers, right?
Correct.
So why don't they have handicap spaces inside their parking lot?
They do.
They do. So?
This is for visitors coming to the building. There are no handicap parking spots located around the building.
Believe me, they're not going to walk from the street being handicapped into that building.
This is around the back.
It's also for people going to the beach. The Police Department did a survey at the request of the towers, and they came out with, that area was short of handicap parking. So we're adding one handicap parking spot to that general area.
That's almost impossible. That building should have their own parking. They got underground parking and, and above parking. I mean, I happen to be a senior, I could talk about this.
It's also for people going to the beach and...
Going to the beach.
They don't have, they don't have parking for everybody in the building.
It was probably a spot that was numbered, it was a spot that was numbered, it's no longer numbered, it's been converted into a handicap parking spot on Kingsley Street, or on the bend, that is on a city street, and the Police Department deemed another one should have been put there.
That doesn't even make any sense. If they have parking, and they have handicap parking, underground and on top of the ground, why do they need our spaces on the street? We have people coming to the beach too, that are visiting. You're taking all these spaces away. They have to provide for their own people. They're getting a break anyway. They're getting a tax exemption, and, for 40 years. I mean, I don't think that's fair.
Rita, these aren't, this isn't a parking space that's dedicated solely to 1701, all right, Ocean Avenue. This is street parking, all right, that would also be used by the general public, who might be either going to the towers, or has business in the area, might be going to the beach. It's not a restricted parking space for, all right, residents.
Well, that's the way the ordinance reads. 1701 happens to be Asbury Towers.
Jerry wanted addresses, so we put down an address. Jerry wanted addresses, so we put down an address.
Yeah, right. Is it on the building?
That's a good question.
It is. That's their official address, 1701.
Right.
I used to work there, so. Now, part of the reason why there's so few parking spots there is because the triangle used to be used for visitors, and it's just been sitting there, waiting for this day when it might become a condo tower. Not if we can help it. But, you know, that might be one of the bargaining chips that, that we could throw out there when I Star wants a favor from us. You might say, "How about opening up that, that triangle, which is just sitting there looking pretty right now, to, to parking, like it was before?" Maybe he might advise...
What I wanted to add about the handicap spot, I'm sorry, it's not about 1701, it's about all of them. Someone need to put the sunshine, I mean sunset, on some of these handicap spots. Because I know on Second Avenue with 302, I'm just saying, but I want to bring it up, and this is the only way to bring it up, there had to be a sunset on some of these handicap spots.
And that's what we did at the last ordinance, and that's what they did, they removed them.
We removed spots in the last ordinance.
Okay, I'm sorry, mister, okay. Sorry about that.
And quite a few of the police's survey, okay, no problem.
Motion to close public?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore? Motion to adopt Ordinance 2015-27, I'm sorry, 26.
27.
27, so I lost.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Council, Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Okay, we are, a motion to enter into a public hearing. Why am I, I'm missing something. Motion to enter into a public hearing on Ordinance 2015-31, an ordinance amending and supplementing Section 30-73 entitled Supplemental Use Regulations of Chapter 30 entitled Land Development Regulations of the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Asbury Park, New Jersey, specifically relating to arcade games.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
No.
This is just to open the public hearing.
This is to open the public hearing.
Just to open the public hearing, okay.
Okay, yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
No.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
And this ordinance relates to the issue of arcade games. As you'll recall, the former city planner, Don Sammett, had brought a proposal forward before the mayor and council, that the council referred over to the planning board for its review and recommendations, dealing with the issue of the presence of arcade games as an accessory use in certain commercial uses in non-residential zoning districts in the city. And the proposal that's before the council now would authorize them within, as an accessory use, in non-residential zoning districts, but limit it to not more than 20% of the usable interior floor area of each establishment.
Did you say non-residential?
Yes, non-residential zoning districts.
Hi. Warner Baumgartner, 402 Fifth Avenue. Just a point of order first. It's customary to demand that people that make comment on official legislative things like this identify themselves. I think that that's required by law. Is that right, council?
Yes, and that is typically what is, is done. I, I think what happened here is that those who came to the microphone were known, but you're on, people should identify themselves.
Yeah, so, for the record, I think that's the legal way to do it, demand people identify themselves. Anyway, I've identified myself. So, moving on, yes, thank you. I'm just concerned about one thing, and that is that arcade games are not specifically defined within this proposed ordinance. So where would that be? Is there already a definition within the land use or city code that defines what an arcade game is? That's number one. Anybody know?
There is a provision in Section 30-73.2, which this ordinance is amending, which refers to coin-operated amusements, and Don had recommended that we take out the reference to coin-operated, which the council would be doing with this.
I see that.
But it says, "Including video games, pinball machines, jukeboxes, pool tables, or games of chance." So it does give some...
Where does it say that? That's not in what's being...
No, that, that's in the existing language of the ordinance, that listing of, of the different types of amusements.
It is? On what's being considered tonight? That's what I have in my hand. I see the strikeouts, and I see the additions, so something must have been missed from what's being considered. Because here it's struck out. Coin-operated amusements is specifically struck out, and arcade games are, are inserted, but it doesn't define what arcade games are. So I think that just leaves it a little too loosey-goosey, you know? Somebody could put a video poker game in and say, "Oh, that's an arcade game," and it could be hooked to the internet, and they're, you know, doing fair, fair play betting, you know, or whatever. Is that the intent, to make gambling, you know, legal here?
I see what you're saying. So that's something I can address with the council after we finish the public comments.
Yeah. Yeah, I think you need to narrow it down as to what exactly an arcade game is. Coin-operated amusement was, you know, pretty outdated, but pretty obvious also. Now, in this day and age, when arcade games could be anything from a gambling device hooked up to the internet, to a skee-ball machine, you need to address that, I think. Just, that's my comment, thank you.
Hi, Joe Pepe, 510 Deal Lake Drive. The 20% thing is what I have a problem with. Picture this room right here. Picture four video games or arc, arcade games together, eight clusters of them. 35 games in this room is what this calls for. I think really, I totally get the idea that businesses like to have things like a jukebox, maybe a little game on the bar. Most towns limit the number of games you can have in the business. Like I said, picture a cluster of four video games, and eight of them in this room, and then put a little snack bar where you guys are standing, and guess what? That's covered. I can open up basically a video arcade anywhere I want in the city that, you know, is zoned for business. So I think really, we should look at what most other towns do, which is limit the number of games that you can have in, you know, in your business.
Just, just because, I remember, when it was either at the first discussion or the first reading, you brought the same concern, and it was originally 25%, and because of your concerns, we knocked it down to 20%. And if we still have this place, which could be an arcade with, you know, 36 machines in it. And I don't think that's really the intent of what we're trying to do here. I think we're trying to let businesses have the opportunity to have games that people enjoy playing when they're in it, but not necessarily gives everybody the right to open up an arcade anywhere they want in Asbury Park. Okay, thank you.
Louise Murray, Asbury Park. Fred, I'd like to address your definition of game of chance, because when I was in California some time ago, they have what is called card, card parlors, you know, where you just go and play cards. Because in California, only the Indians can own casinos. And the reason Oceanside got away with it was because it wasn't a game of chance, it was a game of skill. So my question is, when you mention game of chance, does that border on gambling?
We're, we're going to have to follow state statutes, so I mean, we're not looking to, I would love to, but we're not looking to open casinos, we're not looking to put in blackjack.
No, I know.
We're not looking to put in anything that does not fit New Jersey state statute limitations.
But hey, that's a good idea, though. Think about it. I mean, if we ever want to have a card parlor, we probably could get away with it.
I would love to, but...
In the state, in, in our little city of Asbury Park, right? Make it like a plush casino with no slot machines.
I would like to legalize gambling in Bonnet Park, but the governor keeps on going no...
No slot machines, any of that.
Wasting all the state money in Atlantic City, so, but we cannot violate state law, so we have...
I don't know, you might be able to get around that.
We have inspectors who go out and give the mercantile licenses, and anything they deem to be illegal would be, summons would be issued right away, and they'd be cease and desist, and put out of business.
And that language is language that was part of the ordinance that Mr. Sammett was recommending be taken out, as Warner correctly pointed out. It's shown in the current ordinance before the council with a strikeout through it indicating that it's coming out. After public comment period, we'll address whether council wants to expand at all on the definition of arcade games, but as of right now, that's slated to be coming out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Rita Moran. Why can't you just say four machines or two machines? Why do you have to say percentages? People don't understand that. But if you say one machine, or four machines, whatever it is, they understand that language. They don't understand 20%. Look at the businesses you have now on Cookman Avenue. There's almost, every store is almost a bar. Even the ice cream store has smoked vodka at night. I mean, like, you know, you've, you've created something on Cookman Avenue, it's supposed to be a shopping district, instead it's turned into an entertainment district. And also, the beachfront's supposed to have arcades. I don't think Cookman Avenue ever had arcades. I mean, I, I don't understand how you're doing this. I mean, at least, put down what it's going to be. Two machines, three machines, you know people are going to do something about it, they're going to always, they know they can get away with things here, but you'd be surprised what they get away with. You don't know half the things. And if you put down 20%, they're not going to understand that. Put down what you want. Four machines, three, and plus the fact, now you have people living over these establishments. You better think about them, too. They'll be moving out when they hear these machines going. I mean, we never had people living on Cookman Avenue. You got to go back to the history of the town. And to have 20% of an establishment have machines in them, it's unheard of. They don't do it any other place. I don't know why we have to do things like this. But if you're going to do it, put down how many machines they can have, and that's it, and how much noise they're going to make. That's the other thing you're going to have a problem with. People are going to be complaining about this, that live over these places, or across the street from them. We have the Tides Hotel, two blocks away from us, and we hear them when they're slamming doors at night. So, I mean, like, you have to think about those things. I don't know where you came up with the idea, it must have been somebody, some establishment that wants to put games in, but that, that should be on the boardwalk. That's what entertainment's about over there. It shouldn't be, you call it a business district? That's not even a business district anymore. It's a row of bars. There's no stores to shop there. How is that a business district? And where's the redevelopment plan that's supposed to be on Cookman Avenue? You're breaking, you're always amending rules. It's not fair. It really isn't. You better think about this one.
And if I could just comment that the previous language of the existing ordinance[1618.97] And if I could just comment that the previous language of the existing ordinance did have a specific number of machines listed. The way the ordinance currently reads, before any changes are made this evening, it says establishments containing four or more coin-operated amusements, including video games, pinball machines, jukeboxes, pool tables, or games of chance, shall be considered arcades and may be permitted in the B2 zoning district only. Three or fewer coin-operated amusements may be permitted as an accessory use in hotels, nightclubs, teen clubs, et cetera, in non-residential zoning districts as approved by the zoning officer. The memorandum from the prior city planner indicated that the city's land development regulations allow for coin-operated amusements in hotels, bars, and other restaurant-related establishments, but no more than three are permitted in such instances. I've recommended that the land development regulations be amended to remove this restriction. So it's up to council whether you want to remove the restriction or not.
And also, it doesn't say percentage, does it?
It did not previously, no.
No, but what, there was a back-and-forth with the language, if I remember correctly, where we said not the primary use, right? So to Joe's point, we wanted to make sure that was not the primary use, but then we had an enforcement question, like, who determines that? So I don't know if it's possible to do language where you have both, where you would have 20 percent and not. So it would prevent somebody from opening up what Joe just described, essentially. So it would not be a primary use and 20 percent.
I don't know. I don't know how you're going to enforce it.
Well, if you walked in and you saw what Joe just described, that would not be permitted because the only -- because the primary use is, is arcades.
I think it's very easy to enforce. I mean, the building's 10,000 square feet, 20 percent is very easy to figure out, and I'm just picking a number. And if we say you had a building, which is 10,000 square feet, is a very big building, and you had an establishment that big, and I'm going to say, well, you've got a building 1,000 square feet, you can have four. You've got a building 10,000 square feet, you can have four. That doesn't seem right either. I mean --
It says use it.
Okay. But four per building? Come on, I had a contest reading. When you had your store, how many machines did you have in your store? You.
Any?
Yeah. Any?
No, I didn't have any. I couldn't allow it in my store.
When I had a store on the boardwalk, I had 10 pinball machines.
That's the boardwalk.
Okay. As far as Cookman Avenue saying there was never any machines, you're absolutely wrong. I remember like being a little kid in front of Newberry's and riding on horses and everything, and there were machines, there were arcade machines.
I didn't have a horse.
Did they have 38?
Okay, well, you're not going to change mine, and I'm going to vote yes on it, so that's it. I mean, and again, we're overriding what the planning board said. The planning board said 25 percent. We knocked it down. The main gist of what I disagreed with the planning board was they wanted arcade machines to be, outside arcade machines to be inside. That's my problem. How do you have an outside arcade machine inside? They wanted you, if you owned an establishment anyplace, and say even on the boardwalk. And I brought this up, and Don said, okay, the boardwalk doesn't count because, but the museum, the pinball museum, puts all the little kiddie rides outside. The way this reads, you would have to build them inside, so now you've got to build a wall around them, and now they're enclosed. Being Johnny Max has a couple basketball machines outside. I don't think they're bothering anybody, but the way this word is reads is they can't be outside. Now you've got to build them inside, so you've got to build, you know, Madison Square Garden for two basketball machines. My biggest problem with why we're overriding the planning board's suggestion was they said any arcade, outside arcade machines had to be covered, so which makes them inside.
John, could you define what, give me an example of an outside arcade machine with outdoor?
The two basketball, Hoots or Johnny Max. You go over there and you pay, I don't know, I've never played them. You pay $5 for 10 balls, and you shoot 10 balls, and you play each other.
Is it big, like the regular basketball?
Yeah, I imagine it's 10-foot.
I don't know.
Well, does he have a license to operate it?
Yes, they have to pay a mercantile license.
Oh, he gets a mercantile.
Yes.
Oh, that's another thing you're going to have to control.
So the only thing I would say is people should probably get to the mic and identify themselves instead of it. Or we vote on it, and let's move on with our lives. I don't care what we do.
Nobody talking to the mic.
Since you have not closed public, I am coming back for another comment, if I may. Warner Baumgartner, 402 Fifth Avenue. To the point about the 20 percent. It says 20 percent of usable floor space. Am I correct on that?
Correct. Usable interior floor area.
Now, this is defined as an accessory use. Now, using John's example, John just said, well, you know, you can easily calculate the floor space of a building, you know, it's 1,000 square feet if it's a building this big. Is that really what you mean? Or do you mean this is accessory to an existing primary use that has stuff in it already, and it's 20 percent of the available usable floor space, excluding all the stuff that's in it already? Right? Think about that. You've got a floor space here, this is covered with chairs and tables and stuff. Now, do you measure the size of the room and take 20 percent of that? Or do you measure the usable floor space and take 20 percent of that? That's hard. You think it's easy to do. It's not hard, and it's not easy to do that when there's stuff in the room. 20 percent of the available floor area in here, between the aisles, around the tables, around the podium. I think this is a little too loosey-goosey, right? Who's going to interpret what this means? I think it's, I think it means an accessory use to an existing building with stuff in it. So how do you measure 20 percent of what's left after you include the stuff taking up space already? Thank you.
The language regarding the usable interior floor area came from the planning board. Council just lowered the percentage.
Okay. If you're going to mention Johnny Max's place, that's a huge parking lot. If he wants to have a basketball thing, let him have his two, and that's it. I think if you just keep it simple, no more than two or four machines, and this thing should be, if you only have 1,000 square feet, you only get two machines. If you have 3,000 feet, you only get four machines. That's the rules, and make it simple. Johnny Max parking lot may be 100,000 square feet, he's only allowed two machines or four machines. Make it simple, you won't have people challenging it. And like Rita said with the mercantile license, it's really hard to follow up on all this. Make it simple, so anybody who knows the ordinance can say, hey, how come J&amp;B Store has five machines? I thought the rule was only four.
Yeah, then why?
Make it simple, guys. Don't go, and when one brought up the part about a room like this with the chairs and stuff, you can figure it out, but that means maybe that whole section could be all machines. You don't want the place to be Arcadeville. You want it to be a pleasant shopping or business district. You don't want bells ringing and people on the second floor of the building say, come and say, they can hear the bells ringing on the machines. That's why arcades are put on the boardwalk, because nobody lives there. That's what I believe is what the story is. Thank you.
John, you're right. I did have one machine, a cigarette machine, and I couldn't wait to get rid of it because every two minutes, somebody was asking me for quarters, dollars. I mean, it becomes, it's a real problem to have a machine in a place. I don't know if you knew that. But I got rid of the cigarette machine because I didn't want to deal with the, I even got rid of the phone outside because people were doing that. They were coming in, asking me for change and doing things. Like mixing apples and oranges together, it doesn't go.
Motion to close public hearing.
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Clayton to close public.
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall.
Yes.
Councilmember Warner.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Motion to adopt ordinance 2015-31.
Move it.
Second.
Before you, I was going to say, before you vote, since the language that identifies what constitutes the types of amusements that are considered to be arcade games is shown with strikeout and would be coming out of this ordinance entirely, would you want to keep some of that, such as saying arcade games, including but not limited to video games, pinball machines, jukeboxes, pool tables, and you may or may not want to keep games of chance? But you could put that back in if you wanted to. I just wanted to throw that out there for your consideration.
Second, we're asked. Break down the second we're asked.
Yeah, and I'll leave the rest of it to council as to how you feel about the ordinance otherwise.
Do you guys want to think about this?
Read your recommendation.
Right now, it says arcade games may be permitted as an accessory use in hotels, nightclubs, teen clubs, bars, or other entertainment-related uses in non-residential zoning districts as approved by the zoning officer. But Mr. Baumgartner was correct that there is no definition, at least in this section of the code, that says what an arcade game is. Previously, the language that is coming out spoke of coin-operated amusements, which included a list that had, including video games, pinball machines, jukeboxes, pool tables, or games of chance. So if you wanted to keep that list, so you had some identifiable listing of what constitutes arcade games, you could say arcade games, including but not limited to video games, pinball machines, jukeboxes, pool tables, or games of chance, or any combination thereof. That way, you'd have something in the ordinance that identifies what you're talking about when you're saying arcade game.
Okay. I would say leave it.
Do you have it in there?
Yes.
Yeah.
So there's some reference.
And I would, does it, so when this originally came up, my question was like, why is this even there? It's to prevent arcade, just people opening up arcades? So what if we just added, because when we went with the first language and the planning board came back with the percentage, and people liked the percentage because it was measurable, but could we have both? It would have to be a secondary use, which was the original language that Don suggested.
Absolutely.
And a 20 percent? So, and part of me then feels like you can't have an arcade, and if your business model, people want arcades in your business model, I don't know if it's my job to tell you what's going to work in your business. But I would not want someone doing what Joe said and having it as a primary use, an arcade. That's not what we want, though.
I agree with you. I didn't think.
And I don't think that's what this ordinance says. It's supplemental to your primary business. So if you're a restaurant, you can only have 20 percent of your restaurant. You could vote it to arcade games.
The thing, okay, I'm sorry, are you done?
Yeah.
The thing which kind of bewilders me is like, a half hour ago, we were being scorned about the planning board made a mistake on 603 Lake Avenue. In my estimation, the planning board made a mistake here, and we don't change this, in which we're trying to change it, to knock it down from 25 percent to 20 percent, to make outdoor games outdoors, instead now you've got to build an enclosure around them. We're going to go back to what the planning board suggested, and it's going to stay there until hell freezes over because everybody's against this, which I think is wrong. I thought the planning board decision was wrong, and we've been trying, and Don Sammett from planning thought it was wrong, gave the reason. Earlier, we adopted a resolution, which we have to, to override the planning board of why we're changing this, and we're doing it upon the recommendations of the planner, Don Sammett, because it's already controlled under existing laws on the book. Correct, Fred?
No, sir.
The public session's over.
I'm asking for --
No, you're not, you're going to ask, but you're not going to get it because we made a motion, we seconded it, and now we're given responses.
So are you saying that if we say no to this, it goes back to what the planning board decided?
Absolutely.
If council does not adopt this ordinance tonight, then the existing language remains, not what the planning board recommended. The existing language in the ordinance will remain, and the existing language has a specific number of machines.
Then why are we?
Don's suggestion to council was to remove the specific number of machines and to, no, Don didn't recommend the percentage. Don just recommended removing the identifiable, specific number of machines. It went to the planning board, and then the planning board made their recommendation saying, we agree with what Don Sammett is saying, however, we would limit it to 25 percent of the usable interior floor area. And then council, during your discussion, decided to make it a little less than that at 20 percent. But --
The biggest, I thought, I'm going to bugaboo everything, was the outdoor and the indoor. I mean, the 20 and 25 percent never like really affected me, to Joe brought up the last time. 25 percent is too big. But I mean, it's not going to go back to where --
No, the planning --
If we don't override the planning board, it's not going to go back to what the planning board passed. I'm just using Johnny Max for an example. The Johnny Max cannot have outdoor games?
No, the planning board doesn't make the law. The planning board only recommends to you whenever it's something that deals with land development regulations, which this does. So in addition to the planning board recommendation that you work in a percentage of the usable floor area, the planning board had the following recommendation that council previously said you weren't interested in going along with. Their second recommendation was the board recommends that the area outside of a structure such as a patio area or outside drinking or dining area, parentheses, public space, and parentheses, proposed to be used for arcade games be enclosed in a permanent structure which contains walls and a roof in order to control the volume of noise emanating from that area. The board also recommends that a maximum of 25 percent of the public area be used for said games. So that's not law right now. That was just a recommendation from the planning board.
Okay, well, then I misinterpreted Don, because Don was the one saying, John, you should override the planning board, or else this is going to be law.
That's, that's just a misunderstanding. You have the right to override the planning board's recommendations on how they think you should change the law, but that's not the existing law right now.
So it's going to go back to what?
It would go back to, right now, the language says establishments containing four or more coin-operated amusements, including video games, pinball machines, jukeboxes, pool tables, or games of chance, shall be considered arcades if you have four or more, and may be permitted in the B2 zoning districts, district only.
What's B2? Okay, what's the B2 zoning district?
It's the B2 district.
I'd have to get the zoning map out.
Well, I think that's why he told us to override it, because I think if the planning board had knocked out CBD and Johnny Max and other entertainment places.
But that's for, for or more. And then says three or fewer coin-operated amusements may be permitted as an accessory use in hotels, nightclubs, teen clubs, bars, or other entertainment-related uses in non-residential zoning districts as approved by the zoning officer. So I think what he, Mr. Sammett was getting at is that some restaurants, bars, want to have more than three that are located in non-residential zones in the city that are outside of the B2 zoning district, and this would, the existing law would limit them only to three.
Well, I know he has more than three skee-ball machines.
So it technically would be in violation of the existing ordinance.
I'll table this, guys. If it is walking by.
Do you want to table this and just give it some more thought before you take a final vote? I mean, that's another option.
I would say so.
I'm ready to vote.
How about you, Joe?
Yeah, I think it's --
I don't have a problem tabling it. That's fine. Let's table it and then get some clarification on what the, you know, what the intent. Listen, my recollection is similar to John's, which was requiring businesses, one, we're beat up all the time, we're not business friendly, but requiring businesses to build a roof and walls for a game outside seemed, personally speaking, excessive to me. So, so when that came in front of us, my problem was requiring whoever, you know, interwoven, whoever, whoever wants this outside thing. The second part of that discussion that I didn't want, that I didn't want, was I didn't want any of these in front of their stores. So if you have --